Please stand for the prayer. Dear God, today as this session opens, we pray that your presence will be before us and everyone who serves in the decision-making process of our city. We pray for direction which will lead our city to be strong and unified. May we continue the legacy of our founders. May we be granted this day the wisdom to make decisions which will be for the good of our city. We also pray for your special blessing on all those who are working to transform our city and make it a better place to live and work. Amen. Please remain standing for the pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible with liberty and justice for all. Would the clerk please call a roll?
Counsel Rourke.
Here.
Counsel Samaras. Counsel Belanger.
Here.
Counsel Elliott.
Here.
Mayor Kennedy.
Here.
Counsel Leahy.
Here.
Counsel Leary.
Here.
Counsel Mercia.
Here.
Counsel Milonazzo.
Here.
That's eight present.
Thank you. Counsel Leahy?
Thank you. I wish to do a moment of silence for Brian Shan. Brian is the brother of Mary Shan, work employee of the school department. Brian D. Shan, sixty years old, of Methuen, passed away Sunday, May 21st, surrounded by his family. He was born in Lowell and was the son of the late Walter Mary Moriarty Shan. Brian was a graduate of Lowell High School, University of Massachusetts Lowell. He was a dedicated employee at the Raytheon Corp. in Andover for thirty-five years. Brian is survived by his beloved wife of thirty-two years, Colleen M. Manning Shan, daughter Ashley, her husband Michael of Derry, New Hampshire, granddaughter Madison Galipo, stepdaughter, Sanina Caborno, brothers Daniel Shan and his wife Ida of Chelmsford, Kevin and his wife Lynn of Barica, sisters Kathleen and Mary Shan, both of Lowell, and his mother and father-in-law, Mr. and Mrs. David Manning of Atkinson, New Hampshire. He leaves behind many nieces and nephews, cousins, and in-laws. He'll be sadly missed. Thank you.
Next, under the city clerk, we have the minutes of the Economic Development Subcommittee of May 23rd, the City Council meeting of May 23rd for acceptance. We have a motion to accept and place on file by Counsel Rourke, seconded by Counsel Mercia. Discussion, all in favor, all opposed, so voted. Being before seven o'clock, we'll skip ahead of the public hearings and go to communications from the city manager. And the first one is, A, explore the possibility of locating the new high school in the Hamilton Canal District. We have response from the city manager. Is Counsel Leahy?
Thank you. I just want to say thank you for my colleagues, for--
Counsel Leahy, there is a registered speaker on this issue. Did you want to go first?
Oh, sure. Yeah, yeah. Thank you.
Jackie Dougherty.
Good evening, Mayor Kennedy, City Manager Murphy, the city leadership team, and members of the city council. Thank you for allowing me to speak tonight. My name is Jackie Dougherty. I live at seventy-seven Tyler Park in Lowell, and I'm a member of the Lowell School Committee. I stand before you tonight to speak in response to Counsel Leahy's motion regarding the Hamilton Canal District as a potential site for a new Lowell High School. Like you, I'm an elected member of this city. I was elected by our constituents to oversee the public education of our students, and it is this role that brings me to speak with you tonight. First, let me say that it's an honor to serve my community in this way, and other than raising my own children, serving on your school committee has been the most meaningful work of my life. I mention this because I know from personal experience how difficult it can be to deal with conflicting pressures regarding issues of great importance to our community. I believe I understand the challenge you face in moving forward with this vital project for a new high school at a critical time in our city's history. I am concerned and disturbed by the deep division that is splitting our community regarding the location of the new high school, as I imagine you all are. I'm not here tonight to advocate for a specific location. Despite my personal leanings, I believe we should get all the facts first in order to truly take the best action. Whatever we do, however, it is critically important that we do it well, and we do it now. We cannot delay this decision, which is why I am against Counsel Leahy's well-intentioned compromise motion. As many of you know, we have needed a new high school for a long time. Due to our excellent teachers and staff, we have managed to maintain accreditation for the last twenty years despite our failing buildings and substandard facilities. But time has run out. We must move forward now so we may continue to thrive as a truly diverse and exceptional urban school district. School leadership and staff have made great efforts to develop a superior educational plan for our new buildings, and we know that a new Lowell High School will have a long and lasting impact on the city's progress and the health of our community. I'm here to ask you for your political courage. Stay the course. Follow the schedule you outlined, examine the facts, hear from our constituents, and make a decision that makes the most long-term sense for the well-being of the entire community. But please do not delay. Sometimes it takes great courage under enormous pressure to do the right thing. It is that courage and leadership that has enabled Lowell to reinvent itself time and time again. Let us look back on this time with pride and know that despite the challenges and the conflicts, the legacy we left was one that strengthened and united us toward a brighter future, not only for our children, but for our entire community. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Dougherty. Counsel Leahy?
Thank you. I just want to say thank you for the report. Thank you for my colleagues to allow us to go to the manager's office to take a look at it. You know, despite what's going on over there and the changes that are happening with the economic development of the Hamilton Canal area, it seems like that there are some new things coming in and new ideas that may become reality over there. So I appreciate your indulgence. You know, at the time, when I took a look at it, I just thought it was a good site that would be a quick build as far as new construction would go. I thought that we were stalled over there, so I thought this might spur some development over there, and then eventually, if it had worked out, we could have switched economic development over to the old site. But the report lays out that, you know, we should probably stay the course in that neighborhood and keep things going, so I appreciate the report on it. Thank you.
Thank you, Counsel Dougherty. Further discussion on Counsel Mercy, then Counsel Le-- Counsel Mercy.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I did support this, although in the back of my mind, I felt that it wasn't the right thing to do, but it was the right thing to get information on it, so I admire the person that made it, because we're trying to think of many ways to make everybody happy. I don't think that'll happen, but people at home don't have the report that we do. And when we think of the Hamilton Canal Innovative District, it's also part of a JAM Plan. It's the Jackson Appleton Middle Sixth Street Urban Renewal District as well at the same time. So we have to follow a specific guideline which we put in place, and then, and that included funding from the master plan, that included funding along with the JAM Plan as well. There were numerous grants, MassWorks, EPA, CDBG, State Airmark, all these Chapter Forty-three D funds and a plethora of purposes proposes, and it included certain things that we could do with this land. We could appraise it, we could survey and planning and relocating, expensive demolition and clearance, the different interest structure improvements, but also it stated that we'd need a lot of job creation, so we would not stay in the course if we would have put the high school there. Then there's the street layouts that would jeopardize the master plan, deviating from the construction of the new high school would require a new traffic analysis, so it would also include a redoing of the design at the Lard Overpass. Then it jeopardized probably the land swap between the National Park Service and different things. So when we got this report, it was clear to see that even though many people thought it was a good idea, which it was, there were facts, and someone just said, "gather all the facts." So these are the facts, and it wouldn't have supported that. But I commend the maker of the motion, because that's what we're doing. We're trying to make everybody happy, and I don't think we could do that, but thank you for the report. It was very interesting. I could have went on about more reasons why, but I'll stop right there. Thank you.
Thank you. Counsel Elliott?
Well, I won't go on too long. I didn't support the motion, not because I didn't think it was well-intended, only because I had voted for taking this land when Pellon left the city. And so the city has outlaid money with the expectation and realization that it's going to go back on the tax rolls, and I feel that we will be getting to this point, that it is an opportunity for significant economic development, to strengthen the downtown, to bring vitality to that area and the JAM Plan. We have a new courthouse going in as an anchor development, and there's a lot of things, you know, in process that has to come to fruition and will. And secondly, if we lose that economic development grant, if we lose that MassWorks grant, then nothing's going to go there, and quite frankly, the city does not have that money to bring in utilities and access. And I know that we have, you know, the National Park literally enacted Congress to try to get that land transferred, so it was well-intentioned, I agree, but my concern was about what we're going to do with taking more, taking more land off the tax rolls, you know, for this purpose. So I do, you know, commend Counsel Leahy, as well as my colleagues have, for the effort, but I just want to explain the reason, you know, why I didn't support it, not because it wasn't an attempt to bring some resolve to this issue. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Counsel Dougherty. Further discussion? If there's no further discussion on item A, we'll move on to item B, which is the Lowell High School Project upcoming meeting dates. Any discussion regarding the meeting dates? Counsel Belanger?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Mr. Mayor, this sort of relates to the dates, if I may. Mr. Mayor, through you to the manager. Mr. Manager, excuse me, do we expect cost estimates in by this Friday at the very latest?
Mr. Manager?
That relies so much on this schedule, in my opinion.
Yes. We're meeting with Perkins Eastman in Skanska tomorrow morning at ten a.m. to find out from them exactly where we're at and make sure that they're going to be giving concise information by Friday, especially on the cost estimate of the option. So I will know for sure by midday the exact status of all of that.
Okay, that is--
And I will communicate that to the council.
Thank you.
Thank you. Obviously, costs are very integral to this. This is a very ambitious schedule, as well it should be, for the outreach we need to do when all the information is in. However, it all revolves around that, Mr. Manager, so please keep this council updated as to costs and the public, of course, because without that, it's really almost fruitless to go into all sorts of outreach. We don't have actual costs, and the taxpayers can't chime in when they don't know what's the effect it's going to have on them. So that's very important. We anxiously await that information, Mr. Manager. Thank you.
Counsel Elliott?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So this schedule outlines that a week from tonight, there'll be a presentation in the city council chamber at six-thirty. We will receive that information this Friday, as we normally do, our packet of information with the agenda as set out by the council rules. Is that information going to be made public? It's public information at that point, so if, as of Friday, that'll be public information, and we'll have the weekend, and the public will have a chance to review all of the information prior to that presentation, and it's just a presentation. Then the next step is it goes, the school building committee will also get that information?
Correct.
And the following Thursday, there is a meeting at ten o'clock in the morning, and the school building committee, as laid out by the Massachusetts School Building, they make the recommendation to this council. There'll be public forums again that Thursday night, there'll be something on Saturday at ten a.m. in the morning at the auditorium, there'll be another meeting Monday, the twelfth, and then the following week, two weeks from tonight, a decision will be made at six-thirty. Well, that issue will be before us, high school vote on June thirteenth.
Correct.
Okay. I just wanted to make sure the public--
And remember, the school building committee recommendation is a non-binding recommendation.
Okay.
It's ultimately in the hands of the Lowell City Council alone to decide where the site will be.
Okay. All right, thank you. Thank you, Mr. Manager. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Counsel Leahy.
When, Mr. Through you to the manager. When the school building committee gives a recommendation, is it just going to be a recommendation, or will there be a report with reasons why, or how detailed are they going to get?
It's going to be televised, so you'll be able to hear all of the comments, but anything-- when we made the original vote, it was just a vote and presented the options. I would, I don't think there's going to be any memorandum. That would be difficult to do, because there's so many diverging opinions that I've seen throughout the course of the school building committee meetings. There'll probably be a vote as to what, you know, what their preferred option is.
Okay. Thank you.
Counsel Rourke?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Through you to the manager. So, Mr. Manager, when the June eighth school building committee meeting comes and the preferred option is chosen by the committee, that option then comes to us in a form of a yes or a no, that option that's picked that day?
It would just come to you as a recommendation.
And then we decide on that option or something else?
Whatever, whichever one you want. It's, you know, this, it's within the domain of this city council alone to determine the site, and the school building committee can only recommend it, but it's a non-binding recommendation.
So similar to how it's worked in the past, where there's been ten locations and down to five, those come to us, and then we either yea or nay them, correct?
Yes.
It's just going to be the same process as the last two times?
Yes, it is.
All right, thank you.
Counsel Milonazzo?
Thank you, Mayor. Through you to the city manager. The three public forums that were happening, when we went to the CMAA and the CBA, we had translators there, and it seemed to work very, very well, so I'm just wondering if we're planning to do the same thing.
Yes, we are.
Okay. And the outreach efforts, I mean, obviously, you know, from the standpoint of what's been going on in the community, you have to be living under a rock for not, to not know that this is obviously happening, so I just want to make sure that the outreach efforts, be it in the website or even in ad in the newspaper, is to make sure that people know that these forums are happening.
But we'll reach out to the CBA and the CMAA to make sure that they're aware of the public forums, and they can come, and we'll make sure that we have the translators there for them.
Okay, great. Thank you.
Any further discussion? If not, the chair will entertain a motion to accept communications from the manager and place them on file by Counsel Mercia, seconded by Counsel Elliott. Discussion, all in favor, all opposed, so voted. Next, under votes from the city manager, we have license agreement for the South African Food Market doing businesses, Capri cheese at one oh eight Merrimack Street for sidewalk seating. If there's no objection, we waive the full first reading and go to the second reading. Authorizing the city manager to execute a license agreement between the city of Lowell and the South American Food Market Incorporated for use of a portion of the city property adjacent to the premises at one oh eight Merrimack Street in Lowell for the purpose of sidewalk seating. Do we have a motion to approve?
Motion to approve.
Motion to approve by Counsel Mercia, seconded by Counsel Leary. Discussion, roll call.
Counsel Rourke.
Yes.
Counsel Samaras. Counsel Belanger.
Yes.
Counsel Elliott.
Yes.
Mayor Kennedy.
Yes.
Counsel Leahy.
Yes.
Counsel Leary.
Yes.
Counsel Mercia.
Yes.
Counsel Milonazzo.
Yes.
Eight yays.
Next, we have an order to dedicate at the intersection of Chestnut Street and Nesmith Street for James W., the James W. Sweeney Memorial. There's no objection, we waive the full first reading and go to the second reading, designating the intersection of Chestnut Street and Nesmith Street in the city of Lowell the James W. Sweeney Memorial in honor of James W. Sweeney. Do we have a motion to approve? Motion to approve by Counsel Rourke, seconded by Counsel Milonazzo. Discussion, roll call.
And Mr. Mayor--
I'm sorry, Counsel Mercia.
And when that date comes for the formal dedication, if we could just know about that, right? Okay, thank you.
Roll call.
Counsel Rourke.
Yes.
Counsel Samaras. Counsel Belanger.
Yes.
Counsel Elliott.
Yes.
Mayor Kennedy.
Yes.
Counsel Leahy.
Yes.
Counsel Leary.
Yes.
Counsel Mercia.
Yes.
Counsel Milonazzo.
Yes.
Eight yays.
Next, we have a subcommittee report for the Finance Subcommittee for a meeting held earlier this evening, May thirtieth, two thousand seventeen. Counsel Elliott?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. There was a joint meeting, actually, between the Lowell School Committee Finance Subcommittee as well as the City Council Finance Subcommittee. The purpose of the meeting was to have a discussion between both bodies regarding net school spending and the charging practice that we use. Interesting of note, there is a, for the people at home, net school spending is the amount that, and I wrote it down, Mr. Baldwin, because, or Mr. Conley, I thought it was a good explanation, it is the amount of money that we receive from the state, the Chapter Ninety money, the cash contribution from the state, as well as indirect charges that, for costs that the city pays that are absorbed by the school department. Fair enough? Okay. And I understand, less busing and less adult ed, those are not factored in because they're separate entities and the city's responsible for busing. So to make, to recap the meeting, the city presented the net school costs, the administrative costs, health security, the maintenance costs that we provide to the schools, solid waste, recycling, snow and ice, pension costs for retired school department employees, insurance, Medicaid tax paid by the city loan on behalf of the school department, other insurance costs, retired school department employee insurance, and of course, the biggest one is net charter cost, which totals sixty, thirty-eight million, six hundred and forty dollars. Four hundred, excuse me, I wish it was that, about thirty-eight million, six hundred and forty thousand dollars, which is our total net school spending. So the concern from the superintendent and the, and school committee is the approach or the process that we use. We have a memorandum of understanding that was negotiated almost ten years ago, back in two thousand, two thousand and seven, by then the superintendent and Mr. Lang, which lays out the terms, which lays out the specifics of those eligible costs. And the superintendent and the staff presented a comparison. Option number two, as you explained, Mr. Manager, there are two options. We can, we can use a charge based upon a memorandum of understanding, which is what the city has, or the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education has a formula, which is just a, it's a per pupil enrollment cost or administrative cost. And interestingly enough, we don't use the DESI formula because it, penalized is not the right word, but it, the charge off would be more than what we are doing, so we're making a, we're doing, we're charging the school department less, if you will, and I know this is kind of some accounting, you know, gymnastic, if you will, but the point is, we don't use what the state says we can use, we do something differently. So, long story short, there wasn't a motion, it was just a recommendation that the city, CFO, and the finance team continue to meet with the superintendent of schools and the business manager on the superintendent side of the school side, if you will, and look at the memorandum of agreement, look at where maybe there are some concerns on indirect charges, and, you know, come back to both finance and subcommittees with a recommendation on, you know, with some of the disagreements on the charging practices. But I thought it was, it was a good, it was a good explanation of the net school spending that we talk about all the time. I think personally, the city continues to support and increase the contribution, both in, you know, administrative costs as well as the cash contribution to the city, and I think that's a positive thing, as outlined, as you mentioned, and outlined by the city manager, that between the adopted budget and what was recommended by the city manager, there was a gap that you have closed and made a commitment to fund the two-hundred-and-fifty-seven-thousand-dollar gap through municipal lien and other revenue collections in the forthcoming year, and I think that, again, is another reflection of the commitment that the council and the administration has towards education on the city. So that's a report of, report of progress from the subcommittee. The manager and his team will meet with the superintendent and continue to work out perhaps even a new memorandum of understanding, but they're certainly going to review the two-thousand-and-seven agreement and come back to, come back to the city council and the school committee with recommendations, and if necessary, you know, what the next steps are. So it's some accounting terms and procedures, but it was, it was a good discussion, and I'm going to stop right there, Mr. Mayor.
Thanks, Counsel. So is the intention of the subcommittees that they'll meet again at some point in the future? Is that--
That's a report of progress and recommendation, and if necessary, we will, we will meet again and come back.
Okay, thank you. Counsel Leary?
Just to build off of what Counsel Elliott said, I mean, ultimately, we also asked for was to benchmark net school spending against likes, so similar towns like Brockton and Hollyoke and Springfield and what have you, because there was a, there's a desire always to spend as much as you can to support education. I think everybody, if we had unlimited funds, we would do that. But the statement was made is that the average net school spend is exceeded by twenty percent across the state of Massachusetts. So what we want to do is really benchmark ourselves against likes. So are we doing as well as other urban gateway cities? And I think that's, that's a good number to take a look at in terms of how our budget's structured and how the challenges are met going forward. So that's one thing that the school department will be able to provide us. And I think what should be said is that this administration has done an excellent job. Prior administrations didn't meet net school spending. It was always a dynamic of, let's at least meet net school spending. So the vernacular's changed from, let's meet net school spending to, let's far exceed it, and the number is twenty percent. So I like the vernacular, I like the idea of looking at that, but I also think we should give some, you know, positive accommodation to, Mr. Manager, for terms of actually getting to the point where it's the bare minimum. We've always been trying to make that up going forward, and I think now you've shown that at least the bare minimum is something we're going to hit every time, and like anything else in life, no good deed goes unpunished. Now we need to try to exceed it, which I think is a worthwhile goal, but let's at least take a look at what other communities of like are. Let's benchmark ourselves, let's see if we're ahead of the game or below the game, and then make those adjustments accordingly. One other thing we touched base on was maintenance of the schools. Serving with Mr. Leahy, I know the various mayors here, Counsel Mercer, Milonazzo, and Elliott, one of the biggest problems we've always faced is keeping up with the maintenance. I know, Mayor Kennedy, you're probably going through that at this point in time as well. This is something that's been an aesthetic issue for forever, and it's not due to folks not wanting to do things in a appropriate and timely and cost savings method, it's the way we're structured. And I think we have had a motion for the council to go before the administration to look at that and look at what other cities like Lexington and others do to meet those needs, because ultimately, if you're maintaining your schools as we should, and most of our schools are in that twenty-to-thirty-year range of age, they're not, they're not new schools anymore, those are middle, almost middle-aged schools, you need to really look at how we're taking care of them, because that's money we're going to be spending larger going forward in the future. So it's cost savings, doing it right the first time, and I think the way we're structured is not the most advantageous way. So I think we need to really get in ahead of that, and if there's a viable alternative to what we've suggested, by all means, we need to take a look at. But what we're doing now, really to no fault of the administration or even prior administrations, it isn't effective because of the way we're structured. So if we can take a look at that and kind of bring that in as we get into the summer in the, in the new year. I know, as we get into the budget deliberations, we'll have some discussions about how the administration's funding other positions that the school department didn't fund, because it's really behooving the city to make, make those management adjustments. But I thought there was a good initial meeting, I think, letting the administration, the school department, resolve this issue and-- department resolve this issue and come back with any issues that need further guidance on as appropriate. Thank you.
Thank you. Any further discussion on the, the report? All right, so we have a motion by Council Elliott, seconded by Council Leary, to accept the report of the Finance Subcommittee as a report of progress. Discussion, all in favor, all opposed? So, voted being shortly after seven o'clock, we'll go back to the public hearings. We have several public hearings scheduled for this evening. The first one is for a loan order to borrow $11,077,544 for capital improvements in the FY 2018 budget. We'll open up the hearing for those who wish to speak in favor. Does anybody wish to speak in favor? In favor? In favor? In favor? Hearing none. We'll close the hearing on behalf of the proponents and open it up for those who wish to speak in opposition. Is there anyone who wishes to speak in opposition? In opposition? In opposition? Hearing none. Close the hearing on behalf of the proponents, open it up to the city council. Do we have a motion approved? Motion approved by Council Milonazzo, seconded by Council Mercia. Discussion. Council Milonazzo.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Through you to the city manager. The loan order is $11 million and change, and the capital plan in FY 18 budget is $10,625. I know the difference is for vehicles and equipment. Do we borrow, say, that delta of $400,000 for the same amount of time as we would, or do we borrow it for a shorter period of time? For instance, if we're buying, if we're buying a backhoe for DPW, do we borrow that for five years versus a 20-year borrow? I guess is the question.
Through you, Mr. Mayor. Yes, the borrowing term on something like departmental equipment is five years, whereas for something like a building improvement project, it could be up to about 30 years, and those limits are set by statute.
Okay, okay. Thank you, thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Council Elliott.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So, Mr. Manager, this, this is just part of our annual capital plan, and the debt is built into this budget as well as, as future budgets. And typically, what is the loan order, what is our capital plan every year that we adopt? And I know it's, it's a five-year plan that we, that we review, it's presented to us. Is it, is it approximately the same amount every year?
Counselor, the amount we try to borrow, we, we try to fit within the amount of debt that's coming off the books, so as to level the debt service budget and the operating budget. It's typically around the $10 million number.
Right.
We, we also try to leverage as much city bond proceeds with available grant opportunities. So, we're trying to get the best bang for our buck that we can.
No, and I think that makes some sense. And as we discussed at the Finance Subcommittee two weeks ago, our, our debt on an annual basis, that you have to reinvest. I mean, we don't like to spend any more than we have to, but when debt is coming off, it's important that we keep that number static, so all of a sudden, you know, in five years, we don't have this spike. And we continue to make improvements in the roads, in the sidewalks, in curb appeal, and things of that nature. So, approximately 10.4 million will be coming off, and then we are reinvesting. And this is, and this is my concern when it comes to the high school, is that this big nut that we're about to approach, we need to continue to, when debt comes off, we've got to continue to do city maintenance as well. So, but this is separate, this is distinct, and this is something that we do on a regular basis, so people do see, they, they can see the improvements. And it, and it's not always, you know, it's, it's fire engines, it's, it's police cars, it's, it's just general capital equipment items, excuse me, as well. It's not just all the streets and sidewalks, but that's, you know, it's a component of it. So, I just want to, wanted, wanted to make that clear, that these are the things that we invest in every, every single week, as well as, I mean, we've done loan orders for school improvements in the past, and that's also part of the capital plan. I know a lot of the focus has been on the high school, and rightfully so, but we have 14 schools that are now approaching almost 30 years? Is that right? That, that need work, and they need a lot of work. So, I'm not trying to, you know, the, the sky is not falling, but just going to make taxpayers and people aware that the city does have lots of obligations, and the high school is, is certainly a large part of that. So, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you, thank you, Mr. Baldwin.
Thank you, Counsel. Any further discussion on the motion approved loan order? Hearing none, roll call.
Council Rourke.
Yes.
Council Samaras. Council Belanger.
Yes.
Council Elliott.
Yes.
Mayor Kennedy.
Yes.
Council Leahy.
Yes.
Council Leary.
Yes.
Council Mercia.
Yes.
Council Milonazzo.
Yes.
That's eight yeas.
The next public hearing is to amend Chapter 272-87 entitled "The Annual Sewer Use Charge." We'll open up the hearing for those who wish to speak in favor. Is there anybody who wishes to speak in favor? In favor? In favor? In favor? Hearing none. We'll close the hearing on behalf of the proponents and open it up for those who wish to speak in opposition. Is there anyone who wishes to speak in opposition? In opposition? Opposition? In opposition? Hearing none. We'll close the hearing on behalf of the opponents and open it up to the city council. Do we have a motion approved by Council, motion approved by Council Belanger, seconded by Council Rourke. Council Belanger.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. One point that bears mentioning to this, I know, you know, taxpayers are at home looking at this and going to see an increase in their rates, and, you know, they're going, they're going to have questions, but, you know, I'd just like to inform them that in a large part, this is due to a $40 million loan order that was authorized in 2013 for upgrades, that was mandated by the EPA as, as to why we're in this position where we have to go up. So, I think Connor Baldwin and the finance team did a tremendous job keeping that increase as minimal as possible. It's really a very low impact of what we originally thought the increase was going to have to be. But they were very thoughtful to the taxpayers, but, you know, this, you know, $40 million, it's got to come from somewhere, unfortunately, and so we're up to satisfaction now with the EPA, which is always a good thing, and, but unfortunately, it's going to involve a slight increase in the rates, Mr. Mayor. So, thank you very much.
Thank you, Counsel. Any further discussion? Hearing none, roll call.
Council Rourke.
Yes.
Council Samaras. Council Belanger.
Yes.
Council Elliott.
Yes.
Mayor Kennedy.
Yes.
Council Leahy.
Yes.
Council Leary.
Yes.
Council Mercia.
Yes.
Council Milonazzo.
Yes.
That's eight yeas.
Okay, the next public hearing is approving the, we need a vote to approve the budget for fiscal year 2018. So, the second, second reading is approving the budget for the city of Lowell for the year 2017. This is, this is a public hearing. Is there anybody who wishes to speak in favor? In favor? In favor? In favor? Is there anybody who wishes to speak in opposition? In opposition? Opposition? In opposition? Open up to the city council. Who wants to go first? Council Mercia, then Council Milonazzo.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I did go through this budget the best that I could, and if you want the truth, I could cut maybe 1,000, 2,000, simply small change considering the big budget ahead of us, but it's tight, it's sufficient, it's, there's no room really to cut anything that I could see. Maybe my colleagues feel differently. I would suggest that we just ask if anybody has any questions concerning different departments, and other than that, I would move approval, but I'd like to open it up to my colleagues to see what they feel.
Okay. Just so that everybody understands, the mayor's office did poll the council earlier today to see whether or not people wanted to go through the budget department by department or just ask questions and approve the bottom line. And, and the general consensus seemed to be, although not real strong, but to, to just ask questions and approve the budget, the, the bottom line of the budget. So, that's how we'll proceed if there's no objection from anybody. So, are you, are you all set, Council Mercia?
I'm all set.
Okay, Council Milonazzo.
Did Council Mercia make a motion to approve? If she did, I'll second the motion to approve.
Okay, we have a motion approved the budget, seconded by Council Milonazzo. Council Milonazzo.
I, I had a question, if I could, through you, Mayor, to the, neither the manager or the CFO. The indirect costs of the enterprise funds, and for the most part, the three enterprise funds seem to be doing very well. My question is, what are those indirect costs associated with the enterprise funds? It totals about a little over nine, $9 million, so if I could just get an explanation on the indirect costs.
Absolutely. The indirect costs are charges for the enterprise funds, much in the same way that earlier tonight we discussed the maintenance of effort charges to the school department. We all share several centralized finance functions and other, other functions, where City Hall provides payroll, human relations, benefits, retirement for the employees of the three enterprise funds, the water enterprise, parking, and sewer. And those charges are based on a formal policy and a calculation that's set every year based on the enterprise funds revenues as a percentage of the entire city revenue. So, it gets divvied out, so to speak, each year during the budget process.
If, if those funds are not part of the appropriation order, how do they get paid?
They, by the rules of the Department of Revenue, they don't need to be appropriated.
Okay.
When we submit the recap each year to set the tax rate and set the rates for the sewer charges, for example, we submit those costs at the same time to the Department of Revenue, so they're approved by the state.
Yeah, okay. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Council. Council Rourke.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Through you to the CFO. Con, I know we talked earlier today about, can you explain the process of how the, the city has used, taken money out of the extra free cash and how you plan to sort of put that back in over the course of the fiscal year?
Thank you, Counselor. So, in, as part of the financing plan for this year's budget, there is an appropriation from the general stabilization, or some folks may know it as the rainy day fund. That money will be replaced by the time we set the tax rate. We did the same thing last year, where we will have a certain amount of free cash that isn't certified until the fall right before the tax setting process. And from that amount that's certified by the Department of Revenue, we intend to replenish the amount set in the appropriation order from the stabilization fund. So, we've, we've been able to show that we've been able to do this in the past, and the main source of that revenue is from tax liens, so we don't budget that as a revenue. However, each year, we, the law department in collaboration with the treasury has been very successful in holding tax lien auctions, and every dollar that's earned from that gets added to free cash. So, when certified by the state, it will replenish the amount in the stabilization fund.
And this, went through this process last year, correct?
That's correct. We were successful in that in fiscal '17.
In doing that, did that affect the city's bond rating whatsoever?
It, it has not.
So, don't expect it to do so in this fiscal year as well.
I, I do not expect that, because I do expect us to be able to pay back that money.
Great, thank you. And just quickly, just to, just get to the, the fire department, so the, the grants that we already have achieved, that's for two, a rescue truck and an engine truck, the city is paying for the, the washing machines for the, the turnout gear, and then the city has appropriated $128,000 of its own cash to purchase the turnout gear, and with one pending grant left, if it went as successful, the, the whole department will be given new turnout gear? Is that the plan?
That's correct. We've applied from the federal government for a, a grant that would allow us to completely fund. The chief is here and can speak more to this, but if we don't receive the grant, that amount of money that was just approved in the loan order will be put towards turnout gear. So, unfortunately, it may not be the whole amount, but whatever it is, we will put that in. And we've also built in $50,000 a year for turnout gear for the firefighters in the operating budget.
What do you mean, a period of, I mean, the chief answered, over the next year or two, that should replenish every firefighter's turnout gear, make, making it new, and then with the purchase of the washing machines, this should have a good shelf life, right, chief?
Absolutely. The, the grant also would include new SCBA's for all the trucks, self-contained breathing apparatus. So, if successful, we'd be able to purchase a new set of turnout gear for each firefighter, as well as SCBA's and masks for each, each truck.
And these types of grants, that law has been very successful in the past of achieving, so there'd be no reason to think that we shouldn't be successful again in the future?
Correct. Hopefully, we'll, we'll get the grant this year.
Great, all right, thank you. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Counsel. Counselor, before you start, Council Samaras, who's not here this evening, has given a statement to the clerk that he would like to be read into the record, so.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Yes, Council Samaras couldn't present it for personal reasons. He asked me to just record him, and on the record said he would like to be recorded as supporting the budget, as presented. It would note he was pleased with the funding for public safety. As he, as he noted, the police are able to maintain the personnel in the department, as well as the fire department was able to maintain their personnel numbers as well, and they're also able to update the turnout gear, as you just heard. He, he noted the conservative approach to the budget process and was impressed with the approach by this administration of getting more for less, but still maintaining the proper services in the city. Regarding school requests for a further increase in funding, he noted that the manager has indicated his continued work with the state legislator and the Senate budget bill and to work towards any resolution that may have with the, with the school department administration. That's it.
Thank you. Council Leary.
I'd echo Council Samaras' statement. Just to build off what Council Rourke was talking about, I guess basically reserves, through you to the city manager, Mayor, what are our current sta, after we used $2 million at this point for this budget to, to basically balance the budget, what are our current reserves right now? And I guess if you could compare it to last year, I think last year we used about 1.2 or 1.5 million.
1.5 last year. And we replenished it completely.
Which we replenished.
Yep.
Just so this year, so just to kind of build off, like what are our current reserves right now?
As we sit here today, the city has $10.6 million in the stabilization or the rainy day account.
Okay, so you anticipate getting back up to 12.6 then sometime, as you just articulated to, to Council Rourke then?
It, it would be more of a wash, so we would utilize the money, but then pay it back, so it would be 10.6. However, it does earn interest.
Okay.
So, the more money is in the account, the more interest is earned.
So, what type of, I guess that's the next question, our interest-bearing accounts, how many different accounts do you have right now? And what's the process of looking at, making sure we're getting the best interest rates for the, for our reserve account?
We're constantly examining the opportunities for best interest. We also have to take into account the safety and liquidity of the funding, I'm sorry, of the, the money in the treasury. So, when opportunities do present themselves, there's different restrictions on different kinds of accounts, so stabilization is a little different than our, our main payroll and vendor accounts, but we're always looking for the best deal to earn the best interest on the money in the treasury.
Are you in like, into different contracts with different banks, or is it as simple to, as simple as moving money and?
It's as simple as moving money. It's, it was a motion of Council of Rourke and endorsed by this council to move that money back to the city banks, and we actually negotiated with them a higher rate than we were getting with the out-of-city banks. So, the, the local banks we're doing much better with, and the liquidity and the safety is, is, is very sound, so we're happy with the, where we've put our money in the local banks.
Okay, and if you didn't, if you didn't take some of the reserves to balance the budget, what would our tax rate be then this year, roughly?
Probably about...
Another 1%?
Another 1%, so it would be 2.5 rather than the 1.5 increase in the levy that we have in this budget.
Okay. And just to build off, I know we're going to, not actually in this budget, but we're going to add about a quarter of a million dollars, $250,000, back to the school department to help with their needs in terms of their library aides and paraprofessionals. There's additional cuts there, too, that we spoke about earlier in the finance subcommittee meeting that you are funding. It's the school department actually, which, they had three school resource officers that they eliminated from their budget. We've added that back into our budget. And I know a question came up, are we planning on putting those three particular individuals or positions back into the school department?
That decision has not been made at this point in time. I will talk to the superintendent of police, and we'll discuss what he thinks is the proper deployment of the police officers.
Okay. And to get into the maintenance side, I know we had a long dialogue in the finance subcommittee again about the maintenance. I know you've added, I guess, essentially a position to it. What type of management strategies are you going to utilize to help with the maintenance department? I mean, is that something that's going to be deployed, that's going to be under the DPW, I would imagine, right? Is that something that's going to be assigned directly just for the schools, or is it going to be shared with other departments?
The plumbing, I mean, there's dire needs of plumbing work in the school department. So, I mean, we've already started, we've already had one meeting with the superintendent and their business manager, and our maintenance people and their maintenance people. We've set up a list of projects that have to be completed, prioritized by the school department. We're working on those right now. We're going to meet monthly to get updates on those repairs. Plumbing is a key one, even though they may have eliminated that position in their budget, we still know the need to have plumbing work done in the school department.
And not to beat a dead horse, but ultimately, that plumbing position was added by the school department when I was on the school committee, because we weren't getting the needs met by the, you weren't the city manager at the time. We were not getting issues addressed. So we ultimately went outside the box and just hired them, even though it wasn't the school department's financial or, quite frankly, their management responsibility. So I would strongly encourage you to start taking a look at how we're actually making the function of taking care of the schools a top priority, because I know everybody puts a lot of effort in. I know when you were in the council and I was on the school committee, Mr. Mayor, regarding the facilities, we had to have like a trip around the schools to see how bad they were. It seems to be a big, never-ending circle. We need to take a look at how we're doing this and really do it differently. And I know I said it earlier, and I'm kind of saying the same thing over and over again, but I'm going to continue to say it, because it is going to become an issue again and again. And a lot of our buildings now are reaching, school buildings are reaching that 30-year age. We need to take a look at how we're going to do it differently. Otherwise, we're going to be put in a position where we're going to need more money. It's going to cost us more money if we don't take care of it now. Thank you.
Thank you. You know, Counselor, a periodic trip around the schools isn't a bad idea. That's right. Counselor Belanger?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just want to echo some of the comments of my colleagues. Mr. Mayor, through you to the manager. Mr. Manager, I want to congratulate you and your finance team on such an extremely, extremely responsible budget. I mean, Counselor Mercy has stated it best. You could go in here, it's only within the scope of this council's authority to make cuts. Obviously, we cannot make additions to anything, any line item. But there is just simply nowhere to go. There really is not. You know, and to have a budget, if you want to include cherry sheet assessments to the tune of about $380 million, and you narrow it down to literally a percentage, that is just truly amazing, really. It's very responsible and thorough, and thank you to your administration, and thank you to all the department heads who carry this out and live within their means, okay? In very, very frugal times, they continue to deliver for us. They understand the times, and I want them to know that I'm thankful and appreciative of the job they do of living within their means in this budget. But with that being said, I do have a few questions. Mr. Manager, to you, now, you had mentioned weeks ago, I've been very vocal proponent of special events here in the city, and you said you were adding advertising special event money. Well, I did not see that. So where is it, and where is it coming from, may I ask?
First of all, I agree, I'd like to take credit for this budget, but I can't. It's the, they've done a wonderful job, Connor Baldwin, Rodney Conley, and Bob Peely.
They're included in my accolades. Thank you, gentlemen.
No, they were. And all the department heads are right behind that wall, right there, watching this, and I agree with you.
I know they are. Thank you to them.
They do a great job with this. But I'll have a, there's an increase of $55,000 for, to help out with festivals and with marketing in the city, and I'll ask Mr. Baldwin where you would find that $55,000.
The funding for marketing and special events is included under the city manager's budget, so there's a marketing budget line item that was increased. And then the special events account was also increased separately.
Oh, special events, okay.
So together, the two are the total that the manager just mentioned.
Okay, excellent, because I am watching on this one. You've been an advocate in these cultural events, these small cultural organizations count, rely heavily on having events and this money to subsidize, you know, police and fire details they need to make these events happen. So I'm very appreciative of that. And now that I'm on public safety, and not only within this budget and these harsh economic times, we are keeping historically high numbers of police and fire, maintaining very high numbers in difficult times. So that's not the case throughout other municipalities throughout the Commonwealth, for sure. So that's great. Mr. Manager, we continue, this council and your administration will make public safety a priority, and we have statistics to prove that our philosophy is working. There's no two ways about it. And we appreciate the fire chief and police chief who are here tonight. Thank you for all your work, gentlemen. But, Mr. Manager, the only concerning part of this budget to me, and it's very alarming, is the parking enterprise fund. Now, we have not had an increase in 15-some-odd years, and it is, it has caught up with us. We are headed for a deficit in FY '18. I mean, there's some silver linings here. We've saved a lot of money in energy costs by upgrading lighting and stuff, and that's always great. And Mr. Navin is doing the very best, absolutely, with what he's working with. That's no indictment on his service to the city. But what are we doing about it? It also states that Nick Navin and your administration are sit-down, sort of hashing out these parking rates, because something needs to break here. I simply do not want taxpayers subsidizing parking. We cannot have that. So what are we doing about to address this?
So what we've done is, we have come up with a proposal that we'll be presenting to the city council in the near future relative to parking rates in the city. And it's, Mr. Navin's done a wonderful job. We've gone over it. It deals with, you know, premium parking spots, paying more for premium parking spots, you know, incentivizing people to park in the garages. It's a very good proposal. We've made some tweaks to it that we wanted to make sure could pass muster with the city council. So once we get through this budget and the Lowell High School project, we will be bringing before you a proposal to increase the parking rates. And I think you're going to find that it's a very, very interesting and proactive approach to parking in the city.
Yep. See, this is the approach that we cannot continue to take, not having an increase in 15 years. That cannot, we all know what happens if we go two years without a prop, without a tax increase. We had to go up 2.5%, and FY '14. So that's what happened. So not only do we have to talk about an increase, but a slowly incremental increase over every two years or three years, whatever it may be, to maintain costs, so we don't end up in this position once again. History is repeating itself. And that's no fault of Mr. Navin's. This council needs to approve the rates. So he's doing a great job with what is coming in at this time, but revenues need to increase. And it needs to be user-paid for, not taxpayer subsidized, Mr. Manager. I think we're all clear on that. So, Mr. Navin, how are we doing with that, this parking assessment? Are we looking at everything and new growth, so to speak? And how do we compare with parking rates throughout other municipalities to our size, if I may?
Thank you. So the parking department and the manager's office have been engaged in a very thorough look of, you know, regional market rates to see where Lowell stands with some of our peers within the Commonwealth. And like you said, the parking department is also looking at all aspects of the department, all opportunities of the department to bolster our revenue so that we can meet, you know, these projections here, and some of the growth and new initiatives that we want to tackle in the future, so.
Very good. And it does bear mentioning that we have a new garage being designed as we speak, right? And we may need one more in the Hamilton Canal District. And we all know new garages don't, individually don't pay for themselves when they're first constructed. They're going to have to, need to be subsidized by the other entities within the parking enterprise. So, Mr. Navin, you've got your challenges ahead of you. I know you're up for the task, but let's come up with a good, thoughtful, comprehensive plan so that, you know, we can erase this deficit. At least we see it coming, you're on it, and that's great. So I look forward to your report and your proposal as to raising the parking rates throughout the city of Lowell. But lastly, Mr. Manager, congratulations to all your financial team once again. It's really, that's all I have. There's just nowhere to go. Everything is, at best, level-funded, and, you know, I don't intend on cutting any department as it is, it things are difficult enough for all these department heads, and I don't intend on trying to cut a dime from them. So, thank you, Mr. Manager. I appreciate everything, and this is a budget I support as proposed. Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Counselor. Counselor Lee, or Counselor Elliott?
Thank you. Through you to the manager. Thank you. Very thorough budget again, to you and your team. The only things I just want to emphasize, a few things that my colleagues have already spoken on. So what I'm looking for is just, what Counselor Belanger was talking about, just new ways to generate money. So we don't want to be the most expensive, but we don't want to lack behind. So we want to be, you know, up to date with what, you know, surrounding towns and cities our size are doing. So this year, we have worked on the new fee schedule, just to make sure that we're competitive and we weren't losing out on that. Taking a look at what Counselor Belanger and we were just talking about, the parking rates and fees, even things like special events in the city, you know. If we could, we just did a lot of work over at Lucy Lock'em Park. I don't know how that's going, but, you know, it'd be great if we could have that rented out every weekend to different groups for events, right? There must be some sort of permitting fees over there. It's not a lot of money, but it's something that could come in and generate money throughout the city every weekend if we could have events going on there. I like the numbers that you, you know, you did with public safety. You were able to find some more money for education. But again, anything we can do with fire department, police department, any monies that we can save over there, any vehicles, any equipment we're not using, anything that we can think of. Because as far as the fire department goes, where this year we've been putting a priority on the turnout gear, and I know we're trying to get that federal grant, but the money in the budget, it really only pays for about 20 suits, and we've got to try to find a way to get that number up. So anything we can do this year to get that number up, if that grant doesn't come in, would be appreciated, because it really is just part of their equipment. I mean, we do what we can with the police department, and we have so many different technologies that are coming in, you know. We're looking at the cameras now, we're looking at the tasers, so it's just, goes on and on, these extra costs for public safety, which are kind of the norm now. So anything we can do for the turnout gear would be appreciated. But thank you again for, you know, keeping the numbers up as best we can, and for all the department heads to be living within their means and to do and, to cooperate with the city in these tough times. So thank you for the budget.
Thank you, Counselor. Counselor Elliott?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So I've gone through the budget, Mr. Manager, and it is a lean budget. As we look at, as you look at the various line items going through ordinary expenses have, I think it's important for people to know that there are three new positions in this budget. I wish they were police officers, Mr. Manager, quite frankly, because I think we've made great progress in public safety, and perhaps now is not the time to level off, if you will, but, I mean, I think moving forward as a result of going from historic lows to the level where we're at, and it's 250, is that correct, of commissioners? That, it's a good number, and I think that it's important that we continue that trend. There still are some problems on the street. We continue to look at new technology to address it, and that's a good thing. And I know you can only do so much, and we're talking, as we just talked in the finance subcommittee, we talked about balance. How can we balance? We've committed to education, we're committing to a capital plan, and moving forward, it's a good budget, don't get me wrong. I looked at the FTEs and where they are. Some departments took a hit. I think you looked at combining, you removed a management position, the commissioner of parks and recreation, and some of those duties are being folded into DPW. And I think that's important for the public to know, that we're looking at ways, we're not just adding positions, because we have to add. Many have been taken out, and then some have been, I mean, traffic supervisor is one of the new positions. So there are multiple, a junior clerk in health department is another. So in large part, it's level-funded, the expenses have gone down, even personnel costs over the $342 million are static, you're looking at, you know, collective bargaining with no raises, you've mentioned it, because times are tight, so I commend you in that. And I know it's not a sexy item, but I think the finance team has got to be giving some credit, because we look at refinancing, and it's not just a few thousand, we're talking hundreds of thousands of dollars when we refinance our bonds and the interest. It's important to note that we continue the A1 rating for Moody's and Standard and Poor's, which allows us to go out and get short-term, low, very low interest rates, and that's, you know, that's part of the fiscal policy. And again, some, you know, I guess my point is this, we do as much as we can on the city side and the school side to keep our budgets lean, then we have pension liability that we can do, we can't do anything about. It comes from the state, that's the way it is, and we just have to swallow that number, and we've done a very good job. This year, it's 1.7, in addition to the increase that we have had. And again, the charter school. I don't mean to keep beating this drum, but that's something, we scrape pennies where we can in all of the line items, and we hold the departments to level funding from last year, in some cases, even previous years. And then in one fell swoop, our charter school reimbursement is, and I'll ask you again, Mr. Ballin, this year, the increase is, I know our total liability is $17 million, what was the increase this year on the charter schools?
The net increase is $1.85 million.
Okay. So, there we go. We look, when we look at a 1.5% increase on our, and we don't go the full 2.5%, by the way, and that's a good thing. All of our new growth, all the new businesses that we have coming into the city is wiped away, which is why we filed the home rule petition. And I hope that has some legs, Mr. Manager, because, you know, we can't continue to sustain this thing. We will support education in every corner that we have to, but these are the budget busters, as I would call them, and you, Mr. Healy, that put a real strain on this budget and our ability to do other things. But we have funded things that are important in the fire department, and certainly education, and the list goes on. But it's worthy to say that, whether it's through our general debt and our stabilization fund, those are important components that always don't make headlines, but it's solid, it's secure, and we keep moving forward as best as we can. So I'm going to support the budget, and just want to let taxpayers know at home, we're doing what we can, we're looking for efficiencies, we're refinancing to save thousands. But then when you get these two, and again, we're just paying off, this is the last year, right? This is the last year we're paying off our snow deficit from three years ago, which was significant, and we get it, rather than just, you know, put it on the tax rate and have a significant tax increase. So those are my comments, Mr. Mayor. Thank you. Appreciate the financing. We've had a lot of finance subcommittee meetings, we'll continue to do so, but we're doing the best that we can to hold our line on taxes, and I think we're doing a good job in light of some of the fixed costs that we have to deal with. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor. Just as a point of information, we have drafted up the letter that will go out to other communities regarding the charter school, and we've also developed a list of other communities that we think are probably in the same boat as we are, as far as the negative impact because of charter schools. And so that'll be going out within the next few days.
And just a note, Mr. Mayor, at the joint finance subcommittee between the city and the school committee, there is a request to bring a motion or a resolution over to the school committee side to have them weigh in and support it.
Okay. Thank you. Counselor Lee, then Counselor Ballin?
Just real quick, I forgot to ask this question, but kind of a statement, then a question. Looking at the pilots for this year, I think last year, we were able to collect like $1.1 million, which is, which is pretty good. And I think, without picking on people or picking on entities, we had a motion that passed for you to really reach out to Circle Health to see if they could be getting to work on a pilot. And that $1.1 million is absence of Circle Health. That's tiny little nonprofits, you know, just the average, average folks that probably, a lot of them can't really make those payments, but they volunteer without having anybody really going after them. Asking Circle Health to pay is something that's happening, and I know you and I have spoken about the state of Minnesota, looking at actual state law that's changed, where these type of entities that do have the means, that are, that are growing with, you know, growing in every community in the area, and looking, reaching out with different operations that are making, it's not a profit, but they are well, I guess, well financially sustainable, reaching out to them because we, they utilize our services, whether it be the fire department or the police department. And being creative, I guess, in terms of how they do that. We're talking about building a high school, we're talking about, you know, sustaining the buildings we have within the city of Lowell. If what I've been told is that if Circle Health were to pay like, I think it's a million dollars worth of property taxes, slightly higher, that could actually be allocated towards the fire department, or allocated towards the debt in regards, in terms of looking at a new police station or fire station or DPW, especially the police and fire. Now, it sounds Pollyanna, and it sounds like you're going after one particular entity. I think we need to definitely open up that dialogue. I don't know what the means are at the end of the day, but I do know this, what we have to do to go forward is not sustainable by just raising fees for, on the average taxpayer alone. Now, we have to do that when we do the high school. We're going to have to have a substantial tax increase. But we do need to have other assistance, and this is one means of achieving that. It's not going after every nonprofit who doesn't, who can barely survive. It's discussing with a partner in our community that does have the means. And singling them out is, it doesn't seem fair, or, you know, it's, it's an issue where, why are you doing that? I'm not doing that- it's an issue where, why are you doing that? I'm not doing that because it's, it's something I enjoy doing. I'm doing that because I know at some point when we need a police station and a fire station, we're going to have to wait a decade or more to do that. And a lot of it's going to come on the backs of the taxpayer, which it is our police station. However, they are a large user of those services, and it would benefit them if those services were enhanced or improved. It would actually help their operation be, you know, more successful. So, I didn't want to go that, without saying that. I know it's not an easy topic to do, and not everybody is always in agreement with that. But at the end of the day, we have to do things a little differently in order to, in order to sustain and, and obtain the things that we really need. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilor. Councilor Belanger, then Councilor Elliott.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. A couple points that I, I forgot to mention. Mr. Mayor, through you to Connor Baldwin. Back to the parking enterprise fund, Connor. On section four, page 227. Now, this line item is probably the biggest reduction in the entire budget. It's down over 95%. It is listed, sort of a miscellaneous, as other income, where FY17, the revenues were $840,000. FY18, it's said to be reduced to under $24,000. I recall you, we spoke to this months ago, with some sort of selling, the selling of bonds, or, if I recall, that, that is a big, big reduction in revenue. So, could you elaborate on this a little bit?
Absolutely, Counselor. So, I think what you're looking at in the budget is under the fiscal, excuse me, fiscal 16 actual number, the 625?
Yes. Yep.
Those are proceeds from the sale of the reconstruction bonds when the $6.6 million loan order to repair the Leo Roy and Lower Lock's garages. The premium received from the bonds was collected as part of the enterprise revenue. That's a one-time revenue source.
Right.
And pursuant to the municipal modernization act, that now reduces the amount that needs to be borrowed. It's no longer part of the general fund or enterprise fund revenues.
Yeah. Okay. I just wanted an explanation there, Connor. That's a big reduction. It's, it stood right out to me, obviously, the, I mean, over 95% reduction, so obviously that, that's going to raise a flag. But, Mr. Mayor, through you to the manager. Now, Mr. Manager, we've all alluded to new growth and new revenue in, in any way possible. Now, we, I see the parks and, you know, parks and open spaces sort of was level funded, some slight reduction, a few thousand dollars here and there. We always make do. We always get the job done. However, you know, we are looking for some more significant enhancements of parks and open spaces. Each and every council has alluded to that. Now, with that said, we don't want it on the backs of the taxpayers, but where are we with corporate sponsorships with, with La Lacha Park, with Colley Stadium, with open spaces? We've been talking about this for some time now. So, where are we at with the process? That is a good source of revenue that we can put right into the parks and open spaces without burdening the taxpayers. So, may I ask where we're at?
It's an excellent question. As far as advertising at La Lacha Park, the least that we're negotiating with the spinners is that any of that advertising revenue that's generated would go back into the capital fund of the, of the park, and so it would be used specifically for La Lacha Park. However, right now, Mike Vaughn, our purchasing agent who is right here, has just recently issued an RFP, and it's out on the streets right now, for corporate sponsorships at the different venues in the city of Lowell, specifically Colley Stadium, Alumni Field, and that area. Because it's a, we learned from the new scoreboard that we put up at Colley Stadium that people were interested in advertising.
Of course.
And so, there's a scoreboard at Alumni Stadium. There's a scoreboard at the Martin Softball Field. There's plenty of space inside Colley Stadium. There's one local company, Trinity Ambulance, that pays a significant amount to have their name on the football field at Havel Stadium.
Yes.
So, there are plenty of opportunities for branding, and the RFP is out on the streets right now.
Correct. There's an RFP out in the street right now. I thank you for the opportunity to talk about it. If anybody would like to look, it's on the city of Lowell website. If you go to the city of Lowell website, you look under bid opportunities, you'll see one that says the naming rights. And we're literally looking for anything. It defines what it is. It's going to help us. It's still got another three weeks before we'll even have anything due. But anybody that would like to help us, and all that money is supposed to be dedicated for the repair and the maintenance of those exact fields. So, this is a fantastic thing.
Wonderful. That's great news, Mike. When does the process close? When does the RFP close?
I just extended it. I think it closes June 15th. We, if we haven't seen enough consideration, we could extend it again. We're, we're trying to do two things. There, it's a three-year trial to put out, so whoever does it would get for three years in any of the one spot, but there's a lot. We're, we're interested in letting people do anything, maybe even on the field, on the press box. You know how the outfield over at the UMass Lowell has the, the things there that have individual signs? So, there's all, many different opportunities. We really want to find a way to help maintain the aesthetics and the look of the fields here in the city.
Excellent. That is great news, Mike. Please, give this council an update at the end of the process. We'd like to know where we're at with it. We, this is very, very important funds to, to replenish, put in, back into the parks and open spaces. That's great news, Mr. Manager. Thank you for following through with that. This is some much-needed money that's going to go right into the parks and help out our kids in youth sports. So, thank you again, Mike. Please give up the good work. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilor. Councilor Leahy, then Councilor Malanzo.
Thank you. I just wanted to speak about what Councilor Larry brought up with the, with that motion that they put on with, for the, for the, I lost my train of thought, for the-
Pilot.
Pilot programs. Thank you. So, you know, it is time that we really take a good, hard look at that. And, you know, these are the things that do pay for our public safety. Extra tasers for the police department. So, you know, no harm comes to people, so they don't have to be taken down hard and brought to the hospital. For the firefighters who go on all these rescue calls, you know, to keep them safe and the victims. So, these are things that really, that people really need to start taking a, a good, hard look at, and we need to ask these entities to chip in. Even with these new dormitories going in the city, you know, maybe we should be looking at some sort of a one-time minimal bedroom tax, which other communities do. You know, it's a one-time fee, and it goes to public safety. When we, when we build these buildings and you put all these units in, you know? I mean, they come into our city, they're making a profit. They should share with the public safety aspect of, that this city has to provide for their dormitory, which you're gonna, you know, they're not doing it for free. They're going to make money year after year. So, I just wanted to, to speak up on that. Councilor Larry brought up a lot of good points on that. So, thank you.
Thank you, Councilor Malanzo.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Let me begin by again saying that I think the administration did a terrific job in the FY18 budget, the city manager and his, his finance team. But my question has to do with the intergovernmental revenue, the $183 million. I, I guess I'm asking on behalf of the council that, I'll call it a grant alert, maybe even on a monthly basis, but with what's going on in Washington with the CBG funds and the home funds, and maybe even the Tiger grants could get impacted by what's happening down in DC, that you keep us attuned as to what, what is being discussed. Again, I see it every day in my, in my position relative to the public, federal public housing side of, of things. And I just think that Lowell has been such a welcoming city, and we have these social service programs that are primarily funded on the federal side, that I think this council should be made aware of what impact, beginning October 1st, with the federal budget, would have on this budget. So, if we could call it grant alert, or call it whatever, but have the CFO, keep the council apprised, especially maybe through the finance subcommittee, as to what impact federal cuts may have on this, on this budget. But thank you.
Thank you. Council Mercy?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Through you to the city manager. Two weeks ago, we had people from the school department and the school committee come forward to ask if, if they, if they could be given more money. And I said at the time that when we look at the budget, we can't add to it. So, if you could find it in your heart to make sure that 22 library aides do not lose their job, and you came through with $250,000. And where in that budget is that coming from? Thank you.
You won't see a line item in this budget for the $250,000, but you have my word that I will find that either through the tax title auctions, through free cash, or any other type of revenue that we can, can look at. But you have my word that I will, as soon as we are able to, we will transfer $250,000 to the school department budget.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
I found it. You asked me to find it in the goodness of my heart.
And you have a good heart.
It was a difficult thing to do, but I, I found it.
Any further discussion on the budget? So, my only question would, was going to be what Counselor, Counselor Mercy just asked, which was, would be that the school department budget is not reconciled in this budget. And beyond the 250 or 270,000 that you committed to, there's also, is also dependent on the Senate's version of the state budget. So, could you just summarize all of that for us before we vote?
Sure. It's that the, the school department indicated they were somewhere, they were in, in order to fund all of those positions, they had to use an account to fund them. And so, they were shot somewhere $800, something thousand. And the superintendent, it actually was 869,522. But the, fortunately, the Senate version of the state budget increased chapter 70 money by 611-
11.
$611,000. So, based upon the, the comments of the city council is, what I did is, I said, okay, well, they've, they're going to get the 611,000 hopefully from, from the Senate version, and I'll supplement it with this 250,000 transfer, so that will make up for the money that they had to, to use to keep the library aides or whatever else that they needed to do. So, we'll, when, when, when the budget is done, whatever increase in chapter 70 money is in that budget, we will transfer the school department plus $250,000.
Thank you. Could I just make one last comment? And I know that all the department heads are probably looking in the other room. And I just want to say that they should be commended because they kept that line as level as they possibly could. And I know things go up, prices go up, and yet they do a tremendous job. They're all a credit to the department that they represent, and I'm very honored to be a part of this city where we have dedicated employees that make sure that the day-to-day operations go so smoothly. I know it isn't easy with a city this size, but they do a tremendous job. And I think having them all gathered here, I know you don't see them at home, but they're all here. I've had to take this opportunity to thank them all for a job well done. Thank you.
I agree with you wholeheartedly. They do stupendous work under a difficult situation.
Okay. Any further discussion? Okay. So, the vote, we have a motion by Council Mercy, second by Council Malanzo. Be it voted by the city council in the city of Lowell, the city council in the city of Lowell hereby adopts and approves the budget for fiscal year 2018 for the city of Lowell, including all line items therein, as if separately voted thereon, in the sum of $349,925,167, which sum shall be appropriated and raised by taxation and other sources, including but not limited to intergovernmental revenue. The full list of appropriations follow this vote. The city of Lowell enterprise funds may have insufficient operating revenues to fund all of the expenditures of the funds in fiscal year 2018. And be it voted by the city council in the city of Lowell, that the city council of the city of Lowell hereby raises and appropriates the follow, the following retained earnings. Okay. For the general fund, 317, 317,79,194. Any further discussion? Roll call.
Council Rock?
Yes.
Council Samaras?
Yes.
Council Belanger?
Yes.
Council Elliott?
Yes.
Council Leahy?
Yes.
Council Larry?
Yes.
Council Mercy?
Yes.
Council Malanzo?
Yes.
That's eight yeses.
Okay. Moving on, we have another public hearing that was, that was continued from a previous time, and that's for National Grid requesting insulation of a joint on woodpole and anchor on Viola Street. We'll open up the hearing again for anybody who wishes to speak in favors. Everybody who wishes to speak in favor, in favor, in favor? Good.
Good afternoon. My name is Paulo Sathler. I'm an engineer for National Grid. I'm here to represent the company.
Okay. And you're in favor of this?
Well, I just can't speak.
Okay. Thank you. Is there anybody else who wishes to speak in favor? In favor, in favor, in favor? Hearing none? We'll close the hearing on behalf of the proponents. Open it up for those who wish to speak in opposition. Is there anybody who wishes to speak in opposition?
I want to apologize that I still don't know the proper way to address this chamber. And before I speak to you again, I'm going to get schooled by Jackie Doherty on how to do that. But for now, I'll just say thank you for hearing me. My name is Judith Durant, and I live on 50 Viola Street. My husband and I bought our house there in May of 2001, after a six-month search in the neighborhood, in the area. And what attracted us to Viola Street was the tree-lined streets that created a beautiful canopy. It was a very cozy and homey kind of neighborhood. And within a year, all of the trees were taken down, and it quite changed. I put some photographs out if you want to just look at them. I was told at the time that the reason that all the trees had to come out is that the sidewalks had to be ADA compliant. And I wasn't happy with it. I made a lot of noise at the time to no avail. But I went out today with my tape measure, and I measured between not all of the poles, but some of them, the pole to the edge of the sidewalk. And there's one in particular, right at the corner of Stevens Street and Viola, that is about 29 inches wide, and then it narrows at some point. There's another one further down Viola Street that is 31 inches wide. I'm not sure that any wheelchair or even some baby carriages could get through there. So, that's not really relevant to this, except to say that they're not ADA compliant as they are. Right now, seven out of the 14 poles from Chelmsford Street to Stevens Street on Viola are double poles. And that's only recent. It used to be eight. So, within the last couple of months, the one on Chelmsford Street was replaced to a single pole, telling me that it is possible for those poles to be reverted to single poles. I appreciate that National Grid probably needs that new pole, but I would ask that the way it looks right now, not only is it barren because we don't have trees with all of those double poles, it's starting to look like a neighborhood in a developing country somewhere. And it's just ugly. So, I would ask that they need to revert all of the double poles to single poles before they add yet another one. And that's it. Thanks.
Okay. Thank you. All right. Is there anybody else who wishes to speak in opposition? In opposition, opposition, opposition? Hearing none? We'll close the hearing on behalf of the opponents. Open up to the city council. Council Mercy?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The lady has a legitimate concern here. I'd be a little bit ticked off about that myself. And I do remember the trees, and it was very beautiful, but the sidewalks, the roots were coming right on the sidewalk, and it was becoming a hazard. And to say that we're going to take them down to make them ADA-approved, and you can't even get a baby carriage by, that's not living up to our part of the bargain. So, I know that there's some, some things we can do, but I hope that, sir, you could bring that message back. I know that we're not trying to kill the messenger, but if, I don't know if you could tell them that back where you work. I mean, you're here before us with a request, and we have a request too, with the customer.
No, I understand. Typically, when this ADA or any concern is brought up with the city council or with any of the customers of National Grid, you know, the engineering team is assigned, can be assigned to go and take a look and see what needs to be done for us to be compliant in that area.
So, I'm asking you on behalf of the constituent here, if you could look and take that message back. And as an engineer, stake out what she said and check it out, and try to make it right, I would think.
No, I definitely agree with you. And to also comment on the double poles in the area, there is a significant effort between everybody on the pole, Verizon, National Grid, everybody that's on it. When it's replaced, you have two poles, and everybody goes through. When it's replaced, you have two poles, and everybody goes through with it and transfers everything to the new pole before we can remove the old pole. And National Grid has stepped up recently within the city of Lowell significantly to remove those double poles, to fix sidewalks, or do any repairs to the area that is required by us. And we are making sure that we do that promptly. And we're pushing Verizon.
We'll be watching.
No, definitely. I mean, we are always here to some point, and we're always working with the citizens of Lowell, so.
Okay.
I will work with her.
Yeah.
And.
They have a right to be heard and.
Definitely.
To be corrected. They're taxpayers, they like to live in a nice, modern street as opposed to a third-world country, right? There you go. Thanks.
I agree.
Bring that back to your company, okay?
I will, not a problem.
Thank you.
You all said, Counsel. Counsel Milonazzo, then Counsel Leahy, then Counsel Elliott.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Not to take away any thunder from Counsel Leahy, but I'll move to delay until Counsel Leahy is satisfied that this is being done appropriately and to the wishes of the, of the butter.
Okay, so we have a motion to delay, second by Counsel Larry. Discussion on the motion to delay. Are you all set, Counsel Milonazzo?
Yes.
Okay. Counsel Leahy.
Thank you. Yeah, we should vote to delay. And I appreciate the representatives' comments, but, you know, even, so Viola Street's been an issue for a while, we've had other streets that are issue, have been an issue for a long time. And even over on the corner, Nesmith and Andover Street, we, they switched a pole because trucks keep hitting this one pole that's ready to fall down, yet it's been a month where they transferred some wires, and they still keep the old pole up that could fall at any time. So, you know, I appreciate that people are working on this, but they really aren't. So if that pole falls on somebody, then what are we gonna say? Sorry, we started it a month ago? I mean, you know, we've gotta get everybody whose wires are on that pole out there the same day, or one day after another, and remove it. I mean, it's a safety issue. So until, you know, we get some action, we're gonna have to do things like this on Viola Street.
Counsel Elliott, then Counsel Belanger.
It was last week, or was it two weeks ago? I can't recall that. A public hearing for, I think it was a manhole relocation for National Grid came through, and that was regarding the bridge, and that would affect the bridge. And I gave Counsel Leahy my word that, you know, we've gotta move forward on this, we don't need any more delays on the bridge, but the next one that comes up, particularly this, that I would vote to delay. And we just have got to take a measure that is gonna not only get attention, but make a statement that, you know, the buck stops here in what is taking place on Viola Street. It really is unfortunate. I was here, and we have since adopted a tree ordinance and a tree warden, because, you know, what took place on that road and some others shouldn't happen again, but this certainly is no exception, that, you know, the tree-lined street is there no more, but having double poles just not, it's not acceptable. And I empathize, I would, you know, I wouldn't want to live in that street either, to have all these double poles and then just kinda get, you know, this is a multi-million, maybe multi-billion-dollar corporation, and it's all about dollars and cents and them putting out crews to take them down. Well, they want to make money off their customers, then they need more service, then they've got to provide that service to the, to the community, and that's getting rid of these, these double poles. Do we know how many we have, Mr. Manager? At one point in time, there were, I want to say, 600 or 700 in the city, and then it was, you know, more go up and less come down. Do we have a, a running total at this point?
I just received that report late today from National Grid.
Oh, okay.
They, we're gonna have the representatives of National Grid and Verizon in to discuss the double pole issue and what has to be done. I walk by that Viola Street double pole most mornings, you'd think they'd remove it just so they didn't have to listen to me complain about it all the time. We allowed them to do work on Chelmsford Street last summer, and they, they, both National Grid and Verizon promised me that the double poles would be gone within 30 days of setting them up, replacing them. I went down Chelmsford Street from Stevens to Plain Street one day, and there are still 21 poles, double poles, still standing there, almost a year later, instead of 30 days. So I commend the motion. It has, we have to send a signal to National Grid and Verizon. I've been, you know, Mike McGovern and I have been doing this daily, daily, asking them to deal with this, and, and they don't. So the motion, I think the motion is sound, it's a message to them to say, you better do something, and we're gonna have them in here to explain the double pole issue in the city, how many there are, and what they're doing to correct it.
That's good news. And just one more item, Mr. Mayor. We're just getting lip service, let's face it. Time and time again, some of us have been here for a long time and got the same lip service. And I know that we've asked in the past if there's something that we can do to take legal, legal actions, I don't know if we've identified that yet, but maybe taking a step further. I mean, when we have trouble with problem landlords, whether it's trash or burned-out building, we, we do the work and we, we put a lien, or we charge them. Is this something that any community has looked at? Look, we're gonna contract it out, we're gonna charge you the cost plus interest, I mean, I know we don't want to get into the business of removing poles, but, you know, short of us delaying this, and then delaying another one, and sending a message, I don't really think they care. I think they just come in, they do just enough work to keep it, you know, to quiet us down, and we're moving on to other issues, and they go back to the same, you know, to the same behavior, so. And I'm sure, I mean, you get a lot, we want you to be dealing with, but not every single day worrying about double poles, we get many more other things to address in the community, so it's probably not even, you know, something that we can do, but we've gotta take, we've gotta take measures into our own hands.
The representative they have, Susan Griffin, is here tonight. She's wonderful to deal with, but I don't think they pay attention when she gets back. You don't have to say anything, you'll be here in a couple of weeks, you'll be saying a lot. But I'm just saying is that, as hard as she may try, I don't think, I think you're right. I think it's deaf ears when, when it gets back to the higher ups.
I, I'm probably, I'm not gonna vote for another, you know, until we get this resolved and some action and some, you know, some progress on this, then I, I'm not gonna support any more of these. Thank you.
Thank you. Counsel Belanger, then Counsel Rook.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I do, I share the same frustration as my colleagues. You know, I've only been on, in this seat about three and a half years, and we've been down this road, at least twice I've seen us, delay a motion, a representative comes in, give us a little lip service, lip service, nothing gets done. I've seen it at least twice in my short tenure here, okay? Now, Counsel Elliott said they may not be interested, well, we're gonna have to make them interested, okay? It is time we perhaps consider, you know, stall tactics and delay tactics, but again, without hurting residents of Lowell, without delaying capital projects. I mean, it was last week, they wanted to do a, on the Broadway Street Bridge, which we can't delay any further, it's been that way for months, that's only hurting ourselves. But how do we do this in a manner where we get work done from National Grid, where we get results without hurting residents or capital projects? I am willing to do whatever it takes to hold this company's feet to the fire. Enough is enough with them. We have a representative here, I know, look, they don't make the decisions, we appreciate them being here, but please send a strong message to your superiors tomorrow. We are frustrated, and we are not gonna work with you from this point forward unless we see some action here in the city of Lowell. That's my message, Mr. Mayor, so I support the, the motion to delay. And, Mr. Manager, you'll be meeting with corporate in the next, well, I know we have a lot on our plate, I understand, but as soon as you are able, please get corporate in your office and, and please send a strong message to them. Any way we can delay their efforts, we are going to do so. Again, but not at the expense of, as I alluded to earlier, so, thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Counsel, Counsel Rook. Okay, any further discussion? If I could just add in my two cents, since I've been on this council, back on this council, which has been over five years, we talk about double poles for the whole five years. And, and that's just how it is. And it isn't just in Lowell, it's across the Commonwealth. And I, I don't know if any of you remember, but back at St. Patrick's Day, I, some of my remarks referred to double poles. And the governor, who I think had an earlier career in municipal government, picked right up on double poles because it was a double pole issue for him in Swambsgate or wherever. So I think that the manager's idea of, of having the companies come in is a good one. I don't think we're gonna solve this, but it seems that whenever we do that, the number of double poles diminishes. And so we'll be in better stead than we are today, and certainly, maybe we can get a complete answer for Viola Street.
Can I just add one thing? I, I drive through a lot of communities, and I don't see the double poles anywhere as bad as.
He keeps count, believe me. Okay, any further discussion? All in favor of the motion to delay? All opposed? So voted. That concludes the public hearings. We have three, three reports from the wire inspector, which if there's no objection, I'd like to bundle those together, so the chair would, would accept a motion to adopt the accompanying order by Counsel Rook, second by Counsel Milonazzo, for the installation of joint-owned wood pole and anchor on Gorm Street, for the installation of an underground conduit on Thondike Street, and for the, to install joint-owned wood poles and anchors to accommodate the Market Street Bridge reconstruction. So we have a motion to approve, is any discussion? All in favor? All opposed? So voted. Next, under petitions, we have one property claim. Chair would entertain a motion to refer it to the law department for a report and recommendation by Counsel Belanger, second by Counsel Elliott. Discussion? All in favor? All opposed? So voted. Next, under miscellaneous, we have a request to install a handicap parking sign at 517 Moody Street. Do we have a motion to refer to the traffic engineer for important recommendation by Counsel Rook, second by Counsel Milonazzo? Discussion? All in favor? All opposed? So voted. Next, under miscellaneous, we have a request to install a handicap parking sign at 332 Lincoln Street. Chair would entertain a motion to refer to the pack, traffic engineer for important recommendation by Counsel Rook, second by Counsel Milonazzo? Discussion? All in favor? All opposed? So voted. Next, under city council motions, we have four motions. The first motion is, was submitted by Counsel Elliott, Counsel Larry, and Counsel Samaras, requesting the city council vote to appoint an ad-hoc subcommittee to discuss the process of amending the city charter to review and consider adopting a district-at-large council representation form of government, and then to make recommendations to the full city council. Who wants to go first?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So it's, it's a lengthy motion, and I know Counsel Samaras is not here, and he would like to speak on it, so perhaps we can delay this till, till the next meeting. But the motion is, you know, it, it's, this was something that I brought up many months ago, and as we all know, there's a federal lawsuit, so I wanna, I don't want to, you know, by any stretch jeopardize the city's position, but my position is exactly what is included in this motion. I, I do think it's time that we, we look at this, and I've, I've had interactions with the law department, and, and again, I understand there's a federal, there's a lawsuit against the city, and similar to whether it's, you know, panhandling or other issues, I want to be careful, I don't want to, you know, put the, you know, make things worse. But I do think we need progress on this, and, and I'll, I'll stop on this, I don't know, maybe matter may in between now and the next meeting, if there is some, some options, I don't know if we have to just, you know, what can be done, but I, I want to make my position clear, but understanding there's, there's a lawsuit that I want to be careful as well, so.
Is it a motion to delay until the next meeting?
Motion to delay, Mr. Mayor.
Counsel Larry, on the motion to delay.
Just, and I agree with the delay due to the federal lawsuit, but I think the, the motion speaks for itself at the end of the day.
Yeah.
And we don't want to speak too much at this point, and so we go and discuss with the, the city solicitor on it. I think it's high time that we haven't had a charter review commission since, I don't know, the 70s, maybe the 80s. It's been a long, 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 long time. I know there's a few efforts have been out there to re-engage that that have simply dissipated, but I think it's time to have that discussion, once we review the, the actual federal lawsuit that's pending and, and get legal recommendations from the city solicitor. But it is time we take some action on it. Thank you.
Okay. Any further discussion on the motion to delay? Counsel Mercier.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Is this, to the makers of the motion, is this motion before us because of this federal lawsuit, and we're trying to make, make it all right? I don't, I don't get this.
Yeah, for me, like, no. I mean, obviously, I've debated the issue with people on LTC and elsewhere, and I think it's a time, enough people have come before me to want to review it, I think it's time we actually had that forum and had a review. And ultimately, if any changes were to be made, it would have to go to the public for a vote anyway. So that's how my, my thinking is, is on it.
We have a motion to delay before us, so it's gonna come up at the next meeting, so there's really no need to have a discussion on it this evening, and then redo it when Counsel Samaras is here at the next, Counsel Belanger.
Sorry, Mr. Mayor, thank you. That would be, next Tuesday is, begins our summer schedule and is a high school presentation, so it would technically be two weeks the earliest?
Yeah, what?
Is that what I gather?
Right. The next, the next regular scheduled.
Regularly scheduled, two weeks from tonight, okay.
June 6 is the special.
Yes.
Any further discussion on the motion to delay? If not, all in favor of the motion to delay, all opposed, so voted. The next motion is by Counsel Samaras, requesting city manager of the private department restripes the, the road lanes on Industrial Ave and merge on Thondike Street and Gorm Street. It seemed like an urgent motion, let's, let's pass it anyways without him here. So we have a motion by Counsel Milonazzo, second by Counsel Rook. Discussion on the motion, all in favor? All opposed? So voted. The next motion is by Counsel Milonazzo, requesting city manager update the city council on the status of restriping Nesmith Streets, second by Counsel Rook. Counsel Milonazzo.
The motion speaks for itself, Mayor. Thank you.
Okay, any further discussion on the motion? Counsel Elliott.
Just briefly, Mr. Mayor, Mr. Manager, is there a striping plan in place? Because I'm, I'm sure we're gonna get a lot of these now that the weather, I'm sure the weather has something to do with it, but there's a number of main thoroughfares that need to be done, I think, in the, in the neighborhoods. Perhaps you can get that out, so it'll, it'll circumvent a lot of these motions to let us know where probably most, if not all, the main streets need to be done. Thank you.
Thank you. Any further discussion on the motion? If not, all in favor, all opposed, so voted. Next is a motion by Counsel Leahy, requesting city manager be prepared for all responses to inquiries regarding Lowell High School project at the scheduled presentation meeting before the council. Second by Counsel Larry, Counsel Leahy.
Thank you. Through you, the manager. This is not really more or less directed to you, but for Skansker and Perkins Eastman when they come. I just want them to be prepared for any type of questions that, that come up. We've heard numerous things about traffic, traffic signals, sidewalks, sewage, sewer concerns over on Windward Ave, so they should just be prepared. If anybody has any questions, we should contact your office this week with any questions and all questions that we may want to ask when they have the full presentation, so that's all. And I know we've all been thinking about this, but I just want to make sure people at home may contact us with questions and, you know, anything, time, we want accurate timelines for downtown, we want everything for both, for all the plans being presented. Thank you.
Counsel Leahy.
Just to build out that.
Counsel Larry, I'm sorry.
Same guy, same person. He's all done. Just to go off of the Windward, I know there was a question, we just got an email regarding it, pretty lengthy email. If we can get that addressed, at least at the next meeting, next Tuesday, if that's possible, if it's not possible, at least, what are the steps that have been reviewed, and what are steps that need to be completed? Because that was, you know, it's, it's an issue that has been presented, we do have a motion on it before the council, I think we definitely need to have some type of resolution to it. Thank you.
Thank you, Counsel, Counsel Belanger.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Well, the motion sort of brings up some clarification here now. Mr. Mayor, through to the manager now, Mr. Manager, how many motions pending, pertaining to the high school are pending right now? I mean, you were away last week, and we further put you knee-deep, there was four motions, myself included, but you are perhaps inundated, as we speak, with motions right now. So approximately how many, and how are we progressing? And will they be ready by Friday, when supposedly costs are in, as if, we all made them for reasons they're gonna factor in our decision? So about how many approximately, and how are we progressing, Mr. Manager?
Mr. Manager?
Thank you. I think there's probably at least 20 motions from the city council relative to the high school. We've had the department heads, we've had several meetings, we're gonna have more meetings about the motions. I reviewed about a half a dozen today for final approval. We'll still be reviewing more, but no, you have my word, that you will have responses to each and every motion that was submitted by the city council by this Friday. And we're, we're gonna be setting up a plan, Mr. McGovern, I believe, when we do the presentation, correct me if I run wrong, but the first part of our presentation next Tuesday is going to be the city council responses.
Oh.
So we, you will have your responses in your package, and when we open up the presentation, we will deal with the city council response, motion responses first, and then move on to Skansker. Am I correct at that?
Uh, through you, Mr. Mayor. Yes, Mr. Manager. So the first will be, tentatively, as we meet with Skansker and Perkins Eastman, we'll refine that tomorrow, but what we're looking at initially here is a, a four-part agenda, and it would be, the first piece would be the council motions, and go through all of the, the motions that have been requested over the last couple of months. The second piece would be the summaries of all of the feasibility studies that have been conducted, and then the third piece would be Perkins Eastman's presentation of the four options, and then the fourth, just kind of an overview, a Q and A from the council, and then the general public if they're here.
Okay. Thank you, Mike. So, okay, so council motions, we'll, all the remaining, oh, it's actually, we'll have twenty motion responses in the packet on Friday. Is that tot?
It's roughly twenty, fifteen to twenty. There's some, there have been a couple duplicates here or there.
Wow, I know what I'm doing this weekend now. Okay. All right. Okay, I think that's it. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Council Elliot.
I'm, I, I, most of the motions will not, will not most of the motions be answered by the presentation, by Skansker? I mean, I, I'm all good with getting the responses, but to me, many of the motions have to do with the, you know, the various options.
No, that's correct. We, what we've done is we've taken the feasibility studies and incorporated them into the motion responses, but there are some issues that we have to do on our own, like, for example, Skansker will not be giving us any estimates as to additional infrastructure improvements we'd have to make to different sites, be it sidewalks, be it traffic signalization, things like that, so we're preparing estimates for the cost to do those types of things. So yes, you're correct, is that the studies that have been going on answer most of the motions, but we have to incorporate some of our own information into your motion responses to make them complete.
Got it. Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Any further discussion on the motion? Council Blanche.
Just one more thing, Mr. Mayor, through you, to the, Mr. Manager, please stay on this OPM with cost, that's, that's the, the holy grail in this thing. I mean, that is, that is a huge, huge portion, so please keep us updated as to cost. I cannot say we all know how important it is. Thank you.
Mr. Manager?
Uh, Mike, we will have, the cost will be the paramount issue.
Yes, the cost will be part of the presentations that are given, and which will you be receiving on Friday, the second, as part as the council packet, so those will be refined from the previous costs that were given to you, so.
And I think one of the thing, when we do the four options, is what I've asked them to do is to, you give the options, say option number one, and then you give the, a summary of the pros and a summaries of the cons relative to each, each development that will help you in making your decision as far as, as, as each option moves along. Is that correct?
That is correct.
Go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. One more thing now, what's important is reimbursement, what's the, what's the cost of each option, the cost of the taxpayers, what's the more reimbursable options, very revealing to this council, Mr. Manager, so that's.
And Mr. Baldwin put together a very good analysis on the original four that set out the, the estimated amount, what the estimated share was gonna be, and what the estimated tax increase was gonna be for the average taxpayer. So we'll do another analysis like that for the, for this presentation also.
Council Rock?
Uh, through you, Mr. Manager. So we said to Mr. McGovern earlier, so will it be two cost estimates for each site? Can you just, he tell you that Skansker's gonna have one, that a cost estimate, and then the city's gonna have another cost estimate for the same option with more added to it?
No, what I'm saying is, for example, on the Colley site, is that Skansker will give us the monetary price to do the footprint of the building and sidewalks just around the footprint, but if we were going to extend sidewalks up Clark Road, remember the traffic study was suggesting sidewalks up Clark Road and up Douglas Road, they're not gonna give us an estimate to construct those sidewalks. Our engineering department, or our transportation engineer are coming up with those figures. So you'll get some information from Skansker, but we'll supplement their report with the, with our own information that the council is looking for.
So why wouldn't Skansker give us the estimate for sidewalks?
Um, so, through you, Mr. Mayor.
It's not part of the scope.
It's not required, correct?
Correct.
So it's not required, but you do it anyway?
Right.
Oh, yeah, I think, yeah, they, it's not in their job to do it, but we will do it.
Council Elliot.
But there's no requirement from the SBA either.
Correct.
Right. Okay.
Any further discussion? All in favor of the motion? All opposed? So voted. Any announcements? Council Rock?
Before here, now, Mr. Mayor, can we have a point of privilege just to talk about something that happened earlier this morning in the city? You have the superintendent of police here, and there was a, a drug bust that was made in Lowell, and I understand, Mr. Manager, you were there along with the police superintendent as part as a, a large-scale fentanyl drug ring that hopefully today's bust superintendent across the Merrimack Valley hopefully put a huge dent in that.
Second on the motion to suspend?
Go ahead.
Thank you, through you, Mayor, to Council Rock. Yes, it was a significant announcement this morning. I, I went to the U.S. Attorney's Office in Boston, represented the Lowell Police Department. It was a significant bust mostly centered in Lawrence, but it certainly had tentacles here in Lowell, many other communities in southern New Hampshire, and all over the Merrimack Valley. In total, over fifty people were apprehended on federal and state charges, almost all related to the distribution of fentanyl in the Merrimack Valley, southern New Hampshire area. This organization was responsible for multiple, multiple kilos every week of fentanyl, which is causing the devastation in communities like Lowell. When I had a conversation with the acting U.S. Attorney from Massachusetts, and I explained to him how much we've been able to accomplish in terms of reducing violence in this community, it's, it's really tremendous. At the same time, we are battling this, like other communities, this fentanyl and opiate epidemic, and I think the contrast is very stark. I'm particularly very proud of the efforts of the men and women in the Lowell Police Department. We have two detectives, Lowell Police detectives, that are assigned to the DEA Cross Border Initiative, which really was founded here in Lowell almost twenty years ago, and that was one of the